Good evening. This is Mayor Robert Sullivan and I am going to open up the Brockton School Committee Member Meeting for May 19th, 2020, at being time, at being 6 o'clock. I do need to read the formal declaration. Due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic and state of emergency on March 12th, 2020, Governor Baker issued an executive order temporarily suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20. Pursuant to the order, public bodies are temporarily relieved from the Open Meeting Law's requirement that meetings be held in public places, open and physically accessible to the public, so long as measures are taken to ensure public access to the body's deliberation through adequate alternative means. This meeting tonight will be held and will be accessible to the public via Brockton Community Access, Brockton Public Schools website, which is as follows: www.bpsma.org, YouTube and Comcast Channel 12. The public can access this meeting via the following link: I do want to welcome everybody to the school committee meeting. I want to thank everybody that participated earlier in the subcommittee meetings. Unfortunately, I was unable to join. I was working on some budget figures with the CFO. With that being said, I need to take a roll call vote to open up the meeting under the revised Open Meeting Law. The Chair Sullivan says yes. Vice Chair D'Agostino?
Yes.
Thank you, Mark. Ms. Azak?
Yes.
Ms. Mendez?
Yes.
Mr. Minnichello?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez? Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
And I know the Superintendent Mike Thomas is non-voting and Mike is on as well tonight. We will now, we will now stand and salute our American flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic,
to the republic, one nation,
one nation, under God, indivisible,
indivisible,
justice for all. Thank you very much, everybody. I do now need to take a roll call vote to go into the meeting. Chair Sullivan says yes. Vice Chair D'Agostino?
Yes.
Ms. Azak?
Yes.
Ms. Mendez?
Yes.
Mr. Minnichello?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I did a reverse. Mrs. Sullivan said yes. Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Thank you, Tim. All, all in the affirmative, we can go into the meeting. I do want to publicly thank, as we do every week, Melinda Campbell for all her efforts in compiling the agenda and all the documents. It's, it's hours and hours of work and we want to thank you, Melinda, for all your efforts and your professionalism. We also want to thank Brockton Community, Brockton Community Access and Mike Simmons. Mike is like the Energizer Bunny and I say that with all due respect, he's everywhere and he's working diligently during this new normal. I also wanted to unfortunately give the school committee an update relative to COVID-19. Our loss of life continues. The most recent information which I received today at 4 o'clock is 224 deaths, 224. On Friday, it was 213 and yesterday it was 220. So our loss of life continues. We're still in the thick of things. Current active cases, though, the good news is they've decreased. We're under 2,000 now. 1-9-4-0, 1940 is the current active cases. We're seeing some recovery, which is really wonderful news. Total cases since the state started calculating, 3,025. 3-7-2-5. Again, I just want to thank everybody for their, their professionalism and your efforts as we still maneuver through this terrible crisis. With that being said, I'm going to go to the agenda. Number one was to call the meeting, to order what we did, salute the American flag, which we did, and establishing a quorum, which we did through a lawful vote. Number two is the consent agenda. Again, it's, it's A, B, C, D, E, F. Is there any school committee member that would like to take any of those sections out separately? Mr. D'Agostino, please, and Mr. Sullivan. We'll start with Mark, please.
Items B and C, Mayor.
B and C. Mr. Sullivan?
Item D.
Is there any additional that anybody would like to take out? Okay, seeing none. A, E, and F, we could take collectively. A would be the approval of the May 5th, 2020 Regular School Committee Meeting. E would be the approval of the 2020-2021 BPS Academic School Calendar. And F would be the acceptance of notification of personal actions, leaves of absences, resignations, or retirements. Are there any questions relative to A, E, and F under consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll then entertain a motion on those.
Motion to- Go ahead, Mrs. Sullivan.
Motion to approve A, E, and F.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion was made by Mrs. Sullivan. It was seconded by the Vice Chair, Mr. D'Agostino. A, E, and F. We will now take a roll call vote. The Chair Sullivan says yes. Vice Chair D'Agostino?
Yes.
Ms. Azak?
Yes.
Ms. Mendez?
Yes.
Mr. Minnichello?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah.
Thank you, Tim. That's unanimous. It passes favorably. A, E, and F have, have passed under the consent agenda. Now we will go individual items. Mr. D'Agostino, you have the floor relative to B, please.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, I wanted to make a report of the Finance Subcommittee Meeting from April 28th. So I'll just give you a summary of that report. There were, there were five items on the agenda. The first was the FY 2020 Budget Update. We had Superintendent Thomas and Chief Financial Officer Aldo Petronio give us an update of where they felt things stood. And a couple of highlights I wanted to mention. Mr. Petronio, at that point, was reviewing all the accounts that, that we have, looking for any remaining funds. Again, he was also waiting to find out and hear if we'd be able to carry over funds, which we typically are not able to do. And, you know, we'd had a discussion about the possibility of putting funds in the city stabilization account from non-net school spending. And he'll continue to, he continued to review what funds were available to be able to save for next year. Agenda item number two, FY 2021 Budget Update. The BEA President Kim Gibson gave us some information that she had received from MTA about the First CARES Act and a possible amount for Brockton's first round of, you know, $2 trillion and how much Brockton might benefit from that. And, let's see. Then, there was some discussion on that item. We talked about potential retirees and how many we had, as well as did we have an updated cherry sheet, which we did not. Next, we did learn from, I believe it was from, from President, BEA President Kim Gibson, that we were expecting to get about $4 million from Title I funding. Again, we're not sure whether there'll be a deduction from, on the state side, so we wait to learn more about that. There was a discussion about that. The committee also had a discussion on the next item about transportation vendors and we've, we've held that right now. We can't pay for services that are not being performed, but we are waiting for guidance from the Attorney General's Office. We also discussed special ed, out-of-district placement tuitions, and that those were continuing as required. But we are contacting students and making sure that they are receiving the services that we're paying for. Let's see, and then that is all I have under, under that item for the report of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Any questions of the school committee members relative to B under the consent agenda? Any questions at all? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion relative to B. Sir, a motion?
Motion to approve item B.
Sir, a second on the motion?
Second.
Motion was made by, Mrs. Sullivan made the motion. It was properly seconded by Ms. Azak. I will take a roll call vote relative to B. The Chair Sullivan says yes. Vice Chair D'Agostino?
Yes.
Ms. Azak?
Yes.
Ms. Mendez?
Yes.
Mr. Minnichello?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
It passes unanimously relative to consent agenda B. We will now go on to see, Mr. D'Agostino, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Report of the Policy Subcommittee. On April 28th as well, there was a meeting of the Policy Subcommittee. There were a few items on the agenda that night that I want to just give a quick review of. We had talked about, we had a proposal from the Superintendent regarding grading for high school, middle school, and elementary students due to and during the closure. So we talked about a plan for Term III and when we would close out grades and, and how that would be handled. And, you know, we agreed that a grade could only improve with makeup work. It couldn't potentially go down. Then we moved on to discuss Term IV and, and how that work would be completed and graded. We, we discussed, we discussed that no credit determinations would actually become incompletes and that there would be no automatic failures for Term IV. Then we continued on to discuss elementary school grading policy. That was for high school and, and middle school, I had said prior. And then Ms. Saban McGuire reported to us the difference in elementary cards and explained how they're different because they're standards-based and, and so they're a little bit different. And then we reviewed the grading policy for elementary and approved that. Then we also got a report from Dr. Cancel that in the past 28 days at that point, I remember this was April 28th, 11,000 students had logged in and 1,000 teachers had also logged in. The Superintendent indicated he'd be checking in with principals about student engagement and engagement overall. And then finally, we did have a discussion about end-of-year activities. And we were looking at a couple of different options at that time for end-of-year activities. And the meeting was adjourned at 8:04 PM and that is all I have on that matter.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Any questions of the school committee members relative to C under consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion on that, please.
Motion to approve-
Motion to approve item C.
There's a motion made. It was actually by Mr. and Mrs. Sullivan, but we'll go with Mrs. Sullivan. And is there a second on that, then?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. Do a roll call vote relative to that. The Chair Sullivan says yes. Vice Chair D'Agostino?
Yes.
Ms. Azak?
Yes.
Ms. Mendez?
Yes.
Mr. Minnichello?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Passes in the affirmative relative to C under consent agenda. We will go to the last matter under consent agenda, which is D. Tim Sullivan, you have the floor, please.
I just wanted to apologize right up front because I got a little bit of a delay on this computer. But item D is about the bid review meeting, which took place May 11th. It was a Zoom meeting. In the, I was the chairman of that. Mark D'Agostino is a member. Judy Sullivan is a member as well. And the items, there was 12 items listed. And I'd like a minute to read them off if I could. They're all for fiscal year 21. Lease of the general warehouse space, electrical services, elevator services, energy management control service, fire alarms, food service equipment, repair service, heating and ventilating services, plumbing, refrigeration and air conditioning, telecommunications services, floor finishing supplies, lineup and paper services. All built, all the bids were accepted and were, I might add, as the low bid. And all those were, were accepted unanimously. I just wanted to mention it because a lot of people were interested.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
And I'd like to make a motion that we accept item D.
On the motion, though, I wanted to see if there was any school committee members that may have a question relative to D that Mr. Sullivan just detailed. Any questions? There's a motion made by Mr. Sullivan. Is there a second on that, please?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Sullivan. I'll do a roll call vote. Chair Sullivan says yes. Vice Chair D'Agostino?
Yes.
Mrs. Azak?
Yes.
Ms. Mendez?
Yes.
Mr. Minnichello?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Passes unanimously in the affirmative. Consent agenda D has been approved. We now will move on to number three on the agenda, which is communication. I don't believe there's any communication before us. Mr. Superintendent, are you aware of any?
I know, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We'll go on to number four then, which is now the report of the Superintendent of Schools, Mike Thomas. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, we have some recognitions tonight. I want to welcome with us Mr. John Forz, Mr. Kenny Montero, who could not be with us tonight. Kenny's wife had a baby, baby boy today, so we congratulate Kenny. Kenny has worked as a partner with the school system for the last couple of years. So I wanted to recognize John and Kenny for what they did. This was about two weeks ago. They're both 1999 graduates of Brockton High School. So they collaborated together, were able to get food donated from the Cape Cod Cafe in Deeg's local diner to the Brockton Public Schools Cafeteria workers, the Brockton Police Department, workers at Signature Healthcare at Brockton Hospital, Good Samaritan Medical Center, the Brockton Neighborhood Health Center, Brewster Ambulances, and West Acres Nursing Home. So they were able to get food donated for those workers dealing, obviously, with very tough situations on the front lines. So I want to thank Mr. Forz and Mr. Montero for their efforts. Not only did they get the food donated, they also delivered it themselves with help from others. So I know Mr. Forz is with us, but we want to just thank you for your efforts and your kindness and generosity. And we, we appreciate you having here tonight. It's unfortunate we can't give you certificates in person, but we will be mailing those out. And we just want to really thank you for what you've done for the community.
No, I appreciate you guys. Thank you for having me. And Kenny sends his sincere apologies. And Mike, thank you for helping us coordinate with the lunch staff handing out the lunches every day. And we did serve some pizzas from Village Pizza to them as well. So appreciate your help on that.
No, you're welcome. We really appreciate what you did.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate you.
Forz, I want to thank you and Mr. Montero. I mean, this is what Brockton's all about, right? Coming together and, and making a difference. Without question, during a pandemic, a health crisis, where serious loss of life and people are hurting, you guys stepped up. So thank you very much. You should be applauded. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark? Welcome, Mr. Mayor.
Minnichello?
I would, I'd also like, like to thank Deeg's Diner, Cape Cod Cafe, and Village Pizza. I mean, very generous establishments, very good, you know, places that Brocktonians certainly should frequent because, you know, again, their generosity and the work of these two gentlemen together made it happen. Congratulations and a shout out to all of them.
Thank you, Mr. Minnichello.
So next, I want to recognize Ms. Katie Sanford. Through a grant through the Brockton Covenant Church, Katie was able to secure 13 smartphones with mobile hotspot capability. They're prepaid for three months from Boost Mobile and they went to 13 George School families who had no internet access and could not connect to a hotspot in the city. So this was a huge, this has been an issue around the city with internet access for some of our families. So Katie was able to secure these 13 smartphones with hotspot capability for 13 George families, George Schools families that needed it. So tonight, we have Katie with us and also Principal Natalie Poehl is with us as well. So we say a few words and we really appreciate your generosity.
Absolutely. Mrs. Sanford, I'm going to start if that's okay with you.
Yeah, go right ahead.
So good evening, everyone. And yes, I, I wanted to share with you this generous donation from the Brockton Covenant Church. Mrs. Sanford is one of our parents. Her amazing son Axel is in our Grade 5 Juntos program. She had reached out a few weeks ago asking about needs within our school community and how her church might be able to help. And at the time, our greatest need was a group of families who did not have internet access and for one reason or another couldn't access the, the free Wi-Fi hotspots throughout the city or the Comcast Internet Essentials program. And so we started to explore the option of some mobile hotspots and Mrs. Sanford jumped right on that, contacting local companies. The Wi, mobile Wi-Fi was actually sold out, but she kept trying and was able to work with Boost Mobile to get those 13 phones that Superintendent Thomas had just talked about. Several teachers helped to distribute those to families, Ms. Higgins, Mrs. Holmes, and Mrs. Beliveau. And we were able to get those families now connected to their classroom, classrooms. And in addition, the church was able to donate $200 as well. One of our school counselors was able to use that money to, again, help George School families in need with anybody who had been affected by the virus and in quarantine maybe needed a delivery of food or medicine or a gift card. So we are just truly thankful that in this time of great crisis, we have community members like Mrs. Sanford and so many others who are coming forward to help. It's so appreciated by our students, our families, and our staff and just makes me so proud to work in the Brockton Public Schools.
Thank you, Mrs. Poehl. You're going to make me cry. And so, like Mrs. Poehl said, I'm a member of Brockton Covenant Church and it was really fun to try to work on this and see a way that we could help because one of the teachers had been in contact with Tony at the Breeze Mobile on Warren and he worked with me and Lorenzo Zeroli, which is a regional manager for Boost. And we solved this problem of the sold-out hotspots together and they just kept throwing discounts at me. So they actually gave us about $1,400 in in-kind donations to make this happen, as well as they're available for technical support for the families while they use them. And then the families get to keep the phones and so they can go get more internet or phone at Boost when the contract is over. So we're just excited to be able to help in this way. It's fun to see everyone pitching in and doing their different parts. Kind of cry. The George has been, I would call it a miracle in our life for my little guy. His teachers have been incredible in the two-way and Claudia Gallagher, she has changed our life for the better, the guidance counselor there. And we're so sad to miss the end of our time together where Axel has grown up and Greg and I have grown up as parents, but we're so thankful. So the church is just so excited to be able to have this opportunity to support. Your churches are out there in the city. Everyone is looking for ways they can chip in. So call us. Call the churches. Call the one that you drive by and say, hey, we're having trouble with this need. Can you guys think of a creative way to help us out?
And I'm just going to add that the best part was she created an instruction sheet for the families, like a little how-to. She created it in English and Axel translated it in Spanish using all his skills from the Juntos program. And Ms. Higgins proofread it and said he did an excellent job. So thank you again.
Thank you both. That's just wonderful. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
I, I do want to also thank Mrs. Sanford. I mean, Katie's, Katie's done a lot throughout the years here in the city of Brockton. It's just another example of giving back to the community that we all call home. So kudos to you again, Katie. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We can move on to the report of learning and teaching.
Yes, sir.
Again, thank you, Kenny and Mr. Forz and Katie for being with us tonight. We really appreciate it. So we're going to welcome our student representative back with us, Georgina Unis. She's going to give us an update on how things have been going with, through remote learning and just anything else she can update us with at Brockton High School. We, I shared a video with the school committee earlier today from Matt Cunningham and Bob Hogan, something the Drama Club put together. It's actually the second thing they put together throughout this closure. So we appreciate that. It's such uplifting mess, video for kids. They'll continue to do that as we move through this. But Georgina, nice to see you and thanks for being with us tonight.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Superintendent, and school committee members. Thank you for having me on the call. Currently, the class of 2020 is in the process of receiving their senior lawn signs and T-shirts. Most students, most students have worked on creating their schedules with their guidance counselors through email and utilizing AP and IB applications and the Course of Study Guide. For high school students, this Friday is also the last day to submit any makeup work prior to the closure and any enrichment activities to support their grade. AP students will be completing their online exams by the end of this week. In response to the school closures, College Board altered the exam format, timing, and even content. The exams began on May 11th and will conclude by this Friday, May 22nd. For IB students, formal written exams that were scheduled between April 30th and May 22nd for diploma program and certificate candidates were not held. IB students will be awarded a diploma or a course certificate, which reflects their standard of work. This was based on the students' coursework and the established, like, internal assessments already built into the program. The VHS Art Department created a blog to showcase student artwork made throughout this time at home. The blog, which showcases both student and teacher art, can be viewed at studentquarantineart.blogspot.com. And finally, Superintendent Thomas already mentioned this, the Brockton High School Drama Club and Concert Choir created a senior choral video and a musical montage that can be viewed on YouTube under the channel Brockton High School Concert Choir. Thank you again. Stay safe and healthy.
Thank you, Georgina. We appreciate the report. And delivering the lawn signs was great. I think they were, they were finished today in the T-shirts. I think there's a couple of more T-shirts that have to get out, but I want to thank Dr. Murray and his team to put, putting that together for delivering 1,000 lawn signs and T-shirts to the homes of, of our seniors. And I know that was a major undertaking to get that all organized, put together, put the T-shirts and signs in zones so we could deliver to, you know, obviously do it efficiently. So I want to thank Dr. Murray, the deans, and his team at Brockton High in for our parent volunteers that, that came in and delivered for us. And a couple of our transportation vendors did that as well. So I want to thank everybody for their efforts for, for doing that. It's very important for our seniors to, you know, to make sure we got the lawn signs and, and the T-shirts out there. Any other questions? Or any questions for Georgina?
No, I just want to thank, you know, we missed her. We haven't seen her in a while, but thank you so much for the update and everything you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Oh, so next, under my report, I know that the committee want to revisit the graduation date, which we set for, I believe it was July 27th, and we wanted to talk about that date tonight. Obviously, you know, the original date was scheduled for June 5th. And, you know, that had to be changed with all that's going on. Thankfully, this past week, the cap and gown company that we use is finally reopened. The, this week, the, the company that prints our diplomas has reopened and will start printing our diplomas. I know Dr. Murray has worked with the deans to make sure that we get the, the sizes for the caps and gowns. Um, get the the sizes for the caps and gowns and the color that the students wanna wear. So those are gonna be shipped right to the students' homes. Um, so we can start doing obviously pitches for graduation. Um, but I know we wanted to discuss um. The graduation date tonight, um bringing it back into June. Um, Jess and not only for Brockton High School, this is also for the Key Center. Edison Academy and also for the Huntington School. So between the um the four schools. Yeah, we're usually about twelve hundred to thirteen hundred graduates. Um, so I know we wanted to talk about um, we're we're planning that with BCA. So a virtual ceremony would be accessible to everyone through cable, but also streaming as well on YouTube. So. Um, that's a lot to put together, which we have continued to work on. Uh, but I know we wanna discuss that date and and um some also some other things late, maybe later in the summer. So. Um, right now, it was scheduled for July, I believe July twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. Um, but I think if we could get everything ready, uh get our pitches done, make sure we do speeches, uh allow time for um. You know, everything that we need to get out there, the the printing of the diplomas, uh the graduation gowns, getting, making sure all the pitches line up with everybody's correct name. We do not wanna make mistakes. When we're reading students' names for graduation. So, you know, I I think we could make that on June twenty-seventh. Um, and it would be able to go smooth and we could actually do it upright and make sure we have um, you know. Some singing from our choir, um the speeches that we need to do, the student speeches and uh I know Dr. Murray and Jess. Hodges can jump in as well, but you know, I think we could be confident that we could really pull off a really nice ceremony on the twenty-seventh. Of June. Any questions? Mr. Minicello, please.
Um, what I guess, a a a statement. When we um considered pushing back the date and and did in fact make the recommendation. At the um subcommittee level, you know, our intention, you know, was. Basically to try to gain as much time in favor of um. Current climate, so to speak, the current state of affairs with regard to the pandemic. Gaining more time so that things could perhaps loosen up and we would be able to have more flexibility in terms of. Um, expanding, you know, um from. A virtual um graduation. Um, however, after that subcommittee meeting, I I did receive several phone calls from people. Saying that uh the students seem uh a bit burnt out and exasperated and. Giving more time, even though our intention was. Good to try to, you know, save what semblance of normalcy in light of the circumstances, unfortunate circumstances there are. Um, it it was expressed to me that the students really basically want the pain to end, you know, that they 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 would prefer a a sooner graduation than waiting to July because they just feel that. Um, you know, this year has been so unfortunate, you know, for them, which we all certainly. Can't disagree with them on that. So um i- it the preference from what I'm hearing is to, you know, sort of. Let 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 them go, as they say, let them free, you know, uh sooner rather than later. Um, so that um seems to be the motivation tonight in terms of trying to. Uh, have the graduation, a virtual graduation um sooner, you know, on on the June date rather than wait to July because. Again, you know, many of the students just feel that. They 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 just need it to end because they're they're just so, you know, disappointed in terms of, you know. The circumstances of their senior year, which we we, I think we're all in a total unanimous agreement throughout the country, you know, the world really. For everyone that's graduating from somewhere this year, you know, so. So that's that's basically, I think, the motivation in terms of trying to bring things to an end a little bit sooner. Again, our intentions were always good in terms of trying to, you know. Wake this thing out a bit and see, you know, see if we could be more flexible, but uh it just seems like um. The 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 consensus out there is is, you know, please, let you know, let's just, let's just. Let's just end this thing now rather than, you know, have a drag on much later into the summer when hopefully if things loosen up, people wanna. You know, go to the beach or get away and, you know, and not uh have to, you know, continue to think about, you know, that sort of the year, the year lost or the, you know, the the pandemic twenty-twenty, you know.
Thank you, Mr. Minicello. Any other uh comments or statements from school committee members? I can tell you that um myself and the superintendent and the vice chair had a very good conversation just yesterday. Um, I also uh understand that, you know, parents and students would like it sooner than later and. Uh, you know, my question back to Superintendent Vice Chair is, I don't have a problem at all doing it in the month of June, as long as we can do it the right way and really showcase it and. And and Mike and 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 Mark, um, we were, you know, we spoke for about forty-five minutes or so. We have it pretty well mapped out. Uh, it's gonna be done in a way that um, again, I think everybody's gonna be proud of and more importantly, show that how proud we are of the seniors graduating. So it will be virtual. Uh, I know some people still wanted to be at the stadium in person and that's just unfortunately not gonna happen. Um, but I I do share the sentiments of of Mr. Minicello and uh there there is a desire to uh to do it in the month of June and I think the superintendent's. Right with the date he's proposing. Any other comments from any of the members?
Mayor.
Uh, Vice Chairman, please.
Yeah, just uh again, kind of a s- a statement and and piggybacking on yours and Mr. Minicello's comments. Um, first, I wanted to thank the the mayor and uh. Uh, the superintendent for for their time the other day. We, as the mayor said, we had a a lengthy conversation on this topic and. And Mr. Minicello and the superintendent and I also had some discussion. Um, uh, cause I know that there were a lot of people reaching out to us. Um, a few reached out to me as well. And. So first, I think I wanted to say is that, um, you know, I I. Feel badly and my heart breaks for the seniors because you have lost so much celebration that you have earned. Um, and unfortunately, um, you know, even the, even if we wanted to. Um, you know, the governor's sticking to, you know, no groups larger than ten at this point uh for safety reasons and and so it's just not doable to do it in person. Um, and uh, you know, um, I I. I don't know what to say to our our senior class to make it better. I don't think there's anything we can say. Um, you deserved all of the celebrations and proms and awards and diplomas and um that you normally would get, but unfortunately. Um, so I I I wish there was, you know, a way we could uh uh do that for you. Um, and understand this isn't something we wanna do. I I know that I'm not the only one on the committee that. The our favorite part of being on the committee is graduation day, that day that we get to stand there and shake all your hands and. Hand you your your diploma and congratulate you on all the hard work you've done. Uh, we also, I know we all enjoy the award ceremonies where we get to do the same thing as is congratulate. Um, all our our wonderful students on all the great work they've done. Um, you know, so that's something that we really look forward to 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 doing with with our students every year and. Um, unfortunately, this year it's, it can't be done, but. Um, you know, again, uh, the superintendent was confident that we could put a nice uh virtual graduation together um for the end of the month. So. Uh, I definitely support moving the date up and and hear what people are saying about, you know, let's just have this be done and have the year be done for these kids.
But I also wanna add that, you know, whenever, and it could be the fall. Whenever guidelines change, we will celebrate this class in person somehow with a with an event. Again, I'm a nineteen eighty-seven graduate of Brockton High and I, you know, I never forget that day sitting on that field. Um, and also, again, missing the prom, missing the Spring Musical. Um, all the other senior events for senior, the senior week. I was a. At the time, a dean and assistant dean for a long time at Brockton High and I, it was the best time celebrating with our seniors. The senior breakfast, the senior awards, um, you know, all these events that, you know, we had to, you know, we couldn't have because of this and. But, you know, once, again, once guidelines change as we get deeper. Um, and probably it it later and later, but we're still going to somehow do some kind of physical celebration for our seniors at some point. Um, it just, we'll see what would, you know, the guidelines dictate and, you know, not only are we going by state guidelines, we also have to go by local guidelines as well, cause Brockton isn't a different place. Than uh Stowe or Bolton, a bolting mass. I mean, that we're just in a much different place and even. You know, even with the state guidelines not allowing and even in phase one, and we don't know what they're gonna allow in phase two and three. If they're gonna allow any gatherings larger than ten. So um, you know, those are the things we have to take into consideration, but. I think once guidelines change, and again, this could be into September, I I think it's important somehow that we would. We put things together pretty quickly when we celebrate. So I'm sure at some point. Down the road, we'll definitely do some kind of in-person celebration for the class of two thousand and twenty. Um, if anybody deserves it, these kids do for what they've lost. So um. You know, and we know how hard it is and there's nothing we can say to to really, you know, make anybody feel better. This stinks. There's no other way to say it. It stinks. Uh, it keeps me up at night. It brings tears to my eyes. It it stinks. And um, being a senior that celebrated at Brockton High back in eighty-seven, um. You know, I can't imagine if it happened to us back then. It's just, it's just an awful situation and. We're gonna make the best of it, which and I appreciate the support of the community. Um, and again, we will celebrate our seniors. Um, one way or the other, first virtually and when we can, we'll do another ceremony for them at some point whenever it's allowed.
Mr. Superintendent, follow up on that. Um, originally, when we were talking about July, it was gonna be over two days. Um, now it's June twenty-seventh proposed. Would that also be two days as well, sir?
Yeah, it's probably gonna be, we'll, 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 um, we'll break up the schools. So it's um, you know, Brockton High School and then it's the Key Center. Um, Edison Academy and the Huntington. So they're each able to, you know, celebrate in their own different ways, virtually be able to provide the speeches of their students. Um, you know, so we can recognize each uh graduating class from each of our high schools. So it's, obviously, it's important for all of our high schools. Obviously, Brockton High is the largest one with almost a thousand, but you know, um, usually the Edison has about four hundred. Um, sometimes five hundred. Uh, Keith is a little bit smaller, around twenty and and the same with the Huntington, but obviously those. All those students need to get their recognition as well. So I think a a separate, separate virtual ceremony for each one of those high schools is appropriate. So they can celebrate and and each, you know, hear a speech from their student leaders and also from their principals.
Thank you. Any questions for the superintendent? Mr. Minicello, followed by Mr. Sullivan, please.
Just one final follow-up. Um, I I think we all agree that we are not going to forget the class of two thousand twenty. Whether we can do something, you know, July, August, September, um during the year, uh next year, close to graduation. Um, you know, we we are gonna do something for these students and for all those who would like to participate and celebrate when we can. Um, just to throw something out there, um, I'm told that Suffolk University is um having, they basically are doing a virtual graduation. However. Next year, the day before their two thousand twenty-one graduation. They are inviting the class of two thousand and twenty the day before to do their graduation. Anticipating that next year at this time, things will be back to somewhat normal. So just to, you know, just to throw something out there and that is that. Um, you know. We we can have a graduation at some point when things are safe. Um, the question is, how many students would like to, you know, come back uh for it? But we, I think we'll, we will always welcome. The class of two thousand twenty to 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 do what's right for them when we can safely.
Absolutely.
We'll find a way.
Mr. Sullivan, please.
Yeah. Mr. Superintendent, you had mentioned the uh the printing company for the diplomas is just now coming back to work. Will they be able to get them printed by June twenty-seventh?
Yes.
What about the yearbooks?
Yearbooks are already um. The yearbooks are a bu- uh are behind a couple of weeks, but we'll definitely be able to get I the yearbooks out to students. Um. I know Dr. Murray, he can jump on. He knows more about the yearbooks than I do, but I, he did, he has been keeping me in the loop about the yearbooks. I think they're pretty close. Um, but they'll definitely obviously be out to our students as well. And I think they'll be out before that graduation date, Dr. Murray.
Uh, yeah, our plan was uh they're with the editor, uh being edited this year and um. There was a technical kind of glitch with uh computers and so forth for about ten days, but. We're definitely within the window to make sure that we get the yearbooks out um before before school is over. The other thing is that we had ordered some extra yearbooks and thanks to the uh superintendent and the school committee's support, we're able to keep the. Cost of the yearbooks down to as if they pre-ordered. We have over four hundred yearbooks available and those can be ordered online. So um, we haven't decided or determined after our uh. Signs and T-shirt deliveries, how we're gonna get the yearbooks out, if it's gonna be deliveries again or mail or what, but um, yeah, we we should be right in the window. We should be fine.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. D'Agostino, please.
Um, if it's all right, I'd like to make a motion that we move the date of the virtual graduation uh to June twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. Uh, further in the motion that we also um will, when state, local and federal guidelines allow. Larger gatherings, that we will commit to having a gathering and celebration for our two thousand twenty graduates.
Home of a motion. Is there a second on the motion, please? Who made the second? I didn't see it here.
Mr. Sullivan.
Uh, okay, there's a motion, properly seconded. I'll do a roll call vote. Vice Chair, uh, Chair Sullivan says, yeah, Vice Chair.
Yes.
Ms. Isaac?
Yes.
Ms. Mendez?
Yes.
Mr. Minicello?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan, that's uh, that passes the affirmative and uh, thank you very much for that, Mr. Superintendent and members of the school committee. It makes a big difference. So thank you very much. We'll go on to the next agenda item, please.
And and just sticking quickly with graduation and seniors, I just wanna, um, I talked to Dr. Murray today and just to be clear about the last day for seniors. Um, so per the um Department of Education, they allow seniors to end twelve days prior. To your last scheduled school day. Uh, that's without any cancellation. So our last scheduled school day was supposed to be uh June seventeenth. Um, that's, this was if we had no snow or no cancellations. As you know, our last day now is ju- uh June twenty-fourth, but the Department of Ed. Allows you to stick with that June seventeenth date when you're figuring out the last day for seniors. So if you back that up, um, twelve days from the seventeenth of June, uh, the last day for seniors will be a week from this Friday, which is May twenty-ninth. Um, the week of June first to June fifth, and I know uh Dr. Murray has has spoken about that with the seniors. That's for seniors that are. You know, some of them are, uh, some seniors are finalizing some credits um to get close to their diploma. So the week of June first would be. For that reason, for seniors that need to do a little few things extra to finalize some credits to secure their diploma. But um all seniors' last day of virtual learning will be on on uh June twenty-ninth, but I'm sure, I mean, I'm sorry, May twenty-ninth. But so that's next week, the week of, it's a four-day week. I know Dr. Murray and 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 the deans and the high school teachers during that last week. You know, there'll be some different things for seniors as far as virtual learning uh than the other students. So, you know, basically the last week for students is uh next, uh seniors is next week and their last official day. Is May twenty-ninth per Department of Education guidelines and then the week of June one, the June fifth would be any seniors that needed to tie up some loose ends.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent.
Okay, so moving along, I have um, uh, Dr. Murray and and um, Dr. Cancel, they were on a call last Friday in a, in our um. Our policy subcommittee meeting, we talked about seniors that had not passed the MCAS. Um, so the state was doing a little thi- uh something different for them. Um, if we're able to provide. Um, classwork that those students were able to accomplish, um, that would then waive the the competency determination for MCAS. And um, I just want Dr. Murray and Dr. Cancel to jump in. If there's any new information, I know we had our meeting last, last Tuesday. And then they had a call with the Department of Ed this past Friday. So we just wanna know if they learned any new information from that meeting.
Uh, it actually really just reinforced the um, the information we s- we received uh the week before. Uh, we have polled all of our seniors who had not successfully completed one of the three MCAS exams. And are now reviewing their transcripts to see if they meet the criteria. Established by the state and that would be successfully completing a course that would cover the competencies. In the specific MCAS, either ELA. In the specific MCAS, either ELA math or one of the sciences. So. Uh, we don't have a lot of students. Uh, we always go through a waiver process every year. Uh, we did submit four waivers under the old system already, which we were supposed to do, so. That's an ongoing process, and uh. We're, we're hopeful that this is going to actually help some additional students, but it does require. Us reviewing their uh transcripts, and we have to wait for the state, it's actually June first. Will come out and give us um, a detailed list of what is and isn't acceptable in terms of courses.
Thank you, Dr. Murray. And again, I thank Brockton High School, the teachers, the deans, um, the department heads. Um, they're always battling to the end. Uh, for our seniors, um, that struggle with MCAS, um, and more so this year. Um, with the new requirement and, you know, again, they do everything they can to make sure our seniors get past, you know. To the finish line and earn that diploma. So thank you for the hard work. Next, I want to bring in um, uh, June Saber McGuire, um, just to give us an update on uh, our remote learning plan. Uh, and things that have been going on with our principals and and throughout the schools and. Um, our teachers and uh principals reaching out to students, and again, I want to appreciate the hard work. Of our principals, administrators, and our teachers for um. Their outreach and and what they're doing, the great lengths they're going to reach the kids. Um, that are struggling at home, obviously, with a lot of different cases in Brockton and and the, and the amount of deaths we've had. It has hit our families close to home, um, not only dealing with tough situations. Um, with, with people that have either passed away or have been sick in their home. Um, and also the loss of jobs. So um, so much of our families are dealing with, so I really want, I appreciate all the hard work and the support. Uh, that our teachers and staff has been, have been giving our families, and I want to thank the students and and the parents for really working hard with us to. You know, keep their, keep their uh, their children engaged in remote learning. It's not easy. Kids belong in school, as we all know. Um, not learning from a computer. Um, and it's tough when you're not engaged face to face with a teacher. Um, but again, people are doing everything they can possibly do, uh, you know, basically to get us through this year. And provide the most we can for our students. So I'll let June, June jump in.
Good evening, everybody. So I just want to reiterate what the superintendent just said. We've heard, heard some really um amazing and inspiring stories. Of ways that our teachers and our principals and administrators and adjustment counselors have been able to connect with our families. So. Um, I think that's really important to continue to acknowledge. We um, we've continued to update our district resources on a weekly basis. Um, again, those resources are made available. On Sunday night, early Monday, and again, um, I can't express enough how fortunate we really are as a district. To have such a talented curriculum team, and you know, those folks include people like our district coordinators, Julie and Karen and. Julie Andrade, Karen McCarthy, um, Heather Ronan, and all of those instructional coaches who are out there. Really putting together those resources for us, for our students, for our teachers. Um, their work has really been tremendous, and I can't really thank them enough for that hard work. And again. Just to extend that, to think about our district content leads, AKA associate principals at the middle school level. Our department heads at Brockton High School. But uh, again, our teachers and just the excellent job that they've done to support those resources and then to supplement them. Through some of the um enrichment and other. Learning activities that they're putting out there to support our students. And so what we're hoping to do is to give you a a comprehensive overview. Of how we've approached this phase of our remote learning. Um, based upon what the Department of Ed had put out for what they are called, what they're calling the prerequisite standards. And how we as a district have really mapped out those standards in a way that we believe that. As we start to plan for reentry, um, that we're going to be able to focus on looking at what the standards were that we really did focus on. Over the last sort of month and a half or. Well, really since March twelfth, um, and hoping that. By being able to easily identify the standards that we covered, we'll really be able to target kids who need extra support. On the standards that they may have missed or maybe didn't get enough time to really engage with them. Um, so again, your support as always is truly appreciated. I also want to mention that the learning packets are available again, meaning the printed packets at the high school. Again, thanking Dr. Murray and Tobias Cowan and and Dr. Cobb's. I know that they've done a lot of work in ensuring that those packets. Are available to students and families who um might not have. Internet access, and I know that we're going to be talking a little bit about that. Um, so I think that is it for me. I'm happy to take any questions, but again, we thank you for your support.
Mr. D'Agostino, please.
Yeah, um, thank, thank you, um, June for that report. I I did want to follow up and and I apologize. I did. Step away for about ten seconds, so maybe you covered this and I didn't hear it. But we had discussed, I think, uh, both Dr. Cancel and and Mrs. Walter had discussed as well that we had a few students that we hadn't. Had any engagement from yet, and I know that you guys were working on that and 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 trying to, you know, get the, have some engagement from those kids. Um, do we have any information as far as have, have we been able to engage with some of the, the students we hadn't heard from at this point?
You know, again, I invite Dr. Cancel or um Sharon Walter to jump in on this. I, we have our prin, our regular principal meetings on Wednesdays, and we update each other then. But I know that Dr. Cancel had been collecting that data, but one thing that I can say with confidence is that our teachers. Our principals and our adjustment counselors are making that uh an absolute priority every single day. Um, so I don't have the actual data, but Dr. Cancel might.
Um, sorry to disappoint people, but I don't have the information in terms of uh, if we were successful. In reaching those particular people. That's where um, my information systems break down.
So I can let, I can let Sharon jump in, but I did talk to the education, Leona Martin, who's from um, the education chair from the. The Brockton chapter of the NAACP, and uh, we met with her last week, and they wanted to know how they could help us along, uh. And uh, Sharon has been working with them, and they actually had a list of students that we haven't been able to get in touch with, so. Um, they asked us how we could assist, so they have also been making calls to these families. Um. And we've had other community, community agencies um, reach out as well, but I know Sharon has also um planned actual home visits. So I can let Sharon jump in.
Good evening. Um, with. Regards to the students that the schools had not been able to meet. Uh, or reach, we had the attendance officers making contact. They've made contact with several of those students and reconnected them to their schools. We've also had, as Mike pointed out, uh, some community partners who wanted to help make calls, so they were given. Uh, names of students that the attendance officers had yet to reach. Some of the families have reached back out to the schools. On their own. They had just uh, had disconnected, but after several messages being left, they actually called the schools on their own. And now the Champion City mentors are uh, going door to door for the few we had left that uh. The attendance officer had not been able to reach other community partners. Um, they're also out in the community trying to reengage students that they see who are um. Hanging out and um, making sure that they're connecting to the schools and their teachers and trying to really encourage them. To access the work that we're providing because it's still the, the school year is still in session, so. Uh, I will be able to give you more information on their success uh, at the next meeting. As they are in process and in progress and will keep me updated.
Great. Thank, thank you. It sounds like there's been some significant progress already on that, and um, so I just, you know, I don't mean to keep pushing this issue, but. Um, I, I think in this remote mode, it's probably, you know, I, I just want to make sure we don't. Miss anybody if we can. I know that's, you know, probably won't get everybody, but I appreciate all the effort that everybody, all, you know, the three of you and. The attendance officers and everybody else who's, you know, the NAACP helping us out with that. I mean. I really appreciate everybody who's stepping in to to help us with that outreach. Thank you.
Um, next, I'm going to have um Karen McCarthy jump in, who's, you know, the director of our Title One program. Uh, she has spent. Um, a lot of time over the last couple of weeks with Dr. Cancel, uh, Dan Vigent, uh, Marcia Andrade Serpa. Um, Saraya DeBarros with the issues with internet access for our families. So. Uh, Karen has worked with other Title One directors around the state. Um, to be able to id- identify Title One funds that are allowed to be used to get internet access to families. Um, so I'll let you know what uh Karen has worked on, which she's been able to secure over the last week. Karen, thank you for being with us.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, Superintendent, and School Committee members. Um, I spoke with Comcast again today. Um, Title One is going to be able to pay for five hundred access codes. Um, for five hundred students to be able to access the internet. Uh, the bilingual department has been really helpful at reaching out to families. And right, and all of the principals have also been helpful. So right now, we have about ninety-two families signed up. To um, receive codes for internet access, and the codes will be good for six months. And the decision we have to make is to decide how long the enrollment time is going to be. So all the other districts that I've spoken to, they um, are opening up enrollment until June thirtieth, and then. Um, the access code is good for six months from the time they access. Uh, the Comcast Essentials to, and six months later from then. So we've made a lot of progress on it, and we should be able to have all the codes by the end of this week. And the other decision we have to make is whether or not we want Comcast to send out letters to parents. Or have principals and teachers and administrators call the families. I think it would be more effective if we called the families and gave the codes because of, um, we have translators that can explain everything to the families. Rather than receiving a letter from Comcast. Not sure how. Um, Mike feels about that, but I think that would be more effective. I can have. Some of my admins call families and Kelly Jones can have some of her counselors and bilingual liaisons call the families. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Karen, for doing that, and we'll continue to get the word out um, to the families that that needed. Jess will send messages out as well. Uh, the principals continue to, um, once we find that students are not engaged and we find out the reason. Is because of internet access uh capability, um, then we pinpoint those families and then. Um, we'll have Karen work with them directly to get those codes to them so they can access the Comcast Essentials. So thank you for that. I know that's been a lot of work, and that's been something that's been a big issue for a lot of our families, uh, able to get them a device, but then. Without the internet access, obviously, the device is useless, so um, we appreciate the hard work that everybody did with the bilingual department, with Karen. Uh, Dan Vig and Ethan, um, it was a lot to figure out, but um, they stayed on it and were able to secure five hundred, so thank you. Um, next, as we launched uh, just over a week ago, uh, laptop donation campaign. So tonight, um, that was led by um, Director of Community Schools, Saraya DeBarros. Uh, and Communications Director, um, Michelle Bolton. So they're both with us tonight, and I'll let them give us an update on how much money has been raised. Um, through this campaign, um, obviously to buy laptops and continuing to loan out laptops for our families.
Good evening, everyone. It has been our pleasure to, to work on this campaign. It has been my personal pleasure to work with Michelle Bolton on this campaign and everyone else who has been able to help us. Uh, Michelle will give us a brief overview of where we are at.
Thank you so much, Saraya. Good evening, everybody. Uh, thank you, Mayor Superintendent Thomas and School Committee for having us. Uh, this has been a really incredible initiative so far that um, in a little bit over a week. Uh, we've been able to raise uh, thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents. You know, in a, in a purely grassroots initiative. Um, Superintendent Thomas asked us to do this, obviously, because. So many laptops have been handed out to families, but we still have so many families in the district. Who are unable to afford devices, and we need to get devices into their hands so children can succeed at remote learning. So we launched the campaign um, two Fridays ago. And had set our goal at ten thousand dollars, and within an hour, thanks to Dan Vigent, our Director of Tech Services, we had a ten thousand dollar pledge from O- Ockers. Which is our um, vendor for the laptops, which bought us thirty laptops right off the bat. So we're so grateful to them for doing that, so we raised our goal to twenty thousand dollars, and then within two or three hours, we had met that goal. So we raised our goal to thirty thousand dollars and so on. So at this point, you know, just eight or nine days into the campaign. And gaining momentum, we're almost at forty thousand dollars, and um. Saraya and I can lay out a little bit of what we've been doing to get the word out. Um, Saraya, do you want to take it and talk a little bit about the things that from your end? You've been doing?
Sure, um, we have been contacting um, personal businesses and um, doing outreach as we can. And uh, we're working this week on mailing letters out to about seven hundred businesses in Brockton. And we're also um emailing people that we know, so that they, and we're asking them to share with us their contacts as well. So that's something that we're going on, Michelle, um, that we have been doing. Michelle has also been working on a lot of um, social media platforms, so Michelle, go ahead.
Yep, we have um, we have posted on five social media platforms and given the link to the donations. And then also asked everyone to share on their own platforms. So currently, the link is on Brockton Public Schools, it's on Brockton High School Athletics. It's on Brockton High School Alumni, on Community Schools, uh, and Brockton Community and Family Center, and I should say that this is an effort. Um, that is being hosted by Community Schools and the Brockton Educational Foundation. Um, and one of the coolest things is that the form is set up in such a way that when people donate by credit card. Um, and also if they send in a check, but they're able to uh, make a donation of a ri- a variety of denominations. They can. Uh, pay three hundred and thirty-nine dollars, which is the price of one laptop. Um, yeah, don't, as much as ten dollars, twenty, twenty-five, up to five thousand dollars or or an amount of any kind that they would like. But they can also make a donation in honor of a twenty twenty grad. Uh, a teacher who's been particularly special. They can do it in memory of a family member or anybody else. So there are lots of opportunities to honor people and make it a really special donation for the district.
We have also asked all the staff to share the link twice, resulting in many staff members donating of their own choice. And many have shared with their own networks, so um, everyone is talking about this, so that's why, like Michelle said, in less than um, ten days. We're almost reaching forty thousand dollars.
Right, and hoping to go higher.
Hopefully, yep, and it, um, I believe it was today, Michelle, that we um, also got an email from Stone Hill College from Mary Kelly. The Director of Advancement there, who is discussing how they can help.
Right, and one thing that was interesting is that the city of Detroit received fifty-one thousand laptops from their students, from a coalition within the city. Of private philanthropists, higher education, and business leaders, and. That's something that maybe we want to talk about in Brockton, you know, maybe we don't necessarily need fifty-one thousand laptops, but we certainly need a lot of laptops. And I'd really like to start the discussion of how can we bring people together as a group and close the gap for our families.
Very good, and we want to thank everyone who um, has been able to help us. Jess Hodges, she did a very cute thermometer with. Uh, helping us to keep track of everything, and Superintendent Mike Thomas has been tremendous in um, having us do this and give. Then Vision as well, and everyone who has been able to help us. We so appreciate, and um. And even the principals who shared the link uh on their um, school Facebook. So thank you, everyone, and um, hopefully we can get more soon.
Yeah, still going.
Quick, quick question, if I could. Thank you, Michelle, and Saraya, thank you for what you're doing. Um, so in terms of um, businesses like Ockers that does uh. Raise a lot of money, make a lot of money off Brock- Brock-
raise a lot of money, make a lot of money off Brockton Public Schools, like the paper suppliers, WB Mason Furniture Suppliers, have we, have we reached out to all of those entities as well?
They're part of the mailing, Mayor. We've also emailed, you know, we've emailed a lot of the larger businesses and other entities in the city. And it's an ongoing process. So we're, we're going to cover them all, but certainly open to suggestions of anybody that comes to anybody's mind.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle and Saraya. We appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
And then finally for my report, next week, we'll have an update on the grade six placements and the numbers now that Laurie Mason is working to put the last students that need to be placed for sixth grade, special education students. So we'll be able to place them into our middle schools and then we'll have an updated number for you next week and then we can give you a timeline for when letters will go out for placement. So next week, we'll discuss the grade six placements for next year. And Mayor, I think next is the approval of the summer schedule for the two school committee meetings, one in July and one in August. So the two proposed dates is July 21st and August 11th, and these would be for 6:00 PM start times. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Any questions on that from the school committee members? I'll entertain a motion on those two dates as stated by the superintendent.
Motion to approve summer school committee meeting dates of July 21 and August 11 at 6:00 PM on both.
There a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Zac. It was initiated by Mr. D'Agostino. Proper second. The chair says yes. Vice Chair D'Agostino?
Yes.
Ms. Zac?
Yes.
Ms. Mendez?
Yes.
Mr. Minicello?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Thank you. It's affirmative. It passes. Those are the two dates, again, July 21st and August 11th, 6:00 PM start. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That concludes the report of the Superintendent of Schools. Thank you very much, Mr. Superintendent. We will now go on to five on the agenda, which is unfinished business, Student Opportunity Act, SOA, three-year district plan. Oh, sorry, Mr. Mayor. We had, we still, we had the items to refer to subcommittee, which is a report for the public hearing for the budget. That's right, we do. Any questions on that? Mr. Sullivan, please.
There was one item we missed, the Board on the School Choice 2020, 2021.
Mr. Sullivan, you're right. I apologize. That was C, Vote on School Choice for 2021 that was held earlier this evening. I believe that's Mr. DiAgostino that has to read this into record.
That is correct. Hang on one second. Of all my notes from the evening here, yeah, so this evening at 5 o'clock tonight, 5:45 this evening, the school committee held a, a hearing pursuant to Chapter 76, Section 12B of Mass General Laws regarding school choice. During that hearing, there were no members of the public who signed in to comment. We did have comment from the superintendent and he informed us that we do have 50 seats, students who have school choiced into Brockton. We know we have some students that school choice out of Brockton as well. Mr. Petronio shared that when you school choice in and out, the student takes $5,000 with them. So when we school choice kids into Brockton, we receive $5,000 for that student. The committee member Minicello and myself both commented on some of the virtues of school choice and why we continue to support school choice each year. The, then having no public comment or no other comments, the meeting was adjourned. And that is the report of the public hearing on school choice.
Any questions for the vice chair? Melinda, do we need a, do we need a vote on this?
We do.
We do, we do need to take a vote in our regular school committee meeting to say that we are participating for this school year coming up.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion on that, please.
I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Sullivan made, is there a second, please?
Second.
Second by Mr. Minicello. The chair Sullivan says yes. Vice Chair D'Agostino?
Yes.
Ms. Zac?
Yes.
Ms. Mendez?
Yes.
Mr. Minicello?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
It passes in the affirmative. Now we have to go to E, under the report of the superintendent again, which is the public hearing, Tuesday, June 2nd, 2020 budgets, which items to refer to subcommittee.
Yeah, I think that was, I believe that was the report that I just read, the public hearing. We didn't have a budget public hearing. It was the school choice public hearing that we had. Is that correct, Superintendent and Melinda?
But this is, this, this is an item that we have to refer to school committee before June 2nd is the public hearing on the budget. So we'll have to have, so we'll have to have that conversation when we have our next subcommittee, finance subcommittee meeting, we'll have to talk about it at that time. So just referring the, the public hearing, whether we want to stick with that date of June 2nd. And we can discuss that with Aldo at next week's finance subcommittee meeting. So we're just referring that to next week's finance subcommittee meeting.
I apologize. I, I don't, you're right. Duh. All right.
It's hereby referred. We'll, we'll actually take a vote on that. Is there a motion referred?
Motion to refer subcommittee public hearing for Tuesday, June 2nd, 2020.
Motion was made by Cynthia. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Joyce and Tim. The chair Sullivan says yes. Vice Chair D'Agostino?
Yes.
Ms. Zac?
Yes.
Ms. Mendez?
Yes.
Mr. Minicello?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan? Yeah. Passes in the affirmative. It's hereby referred to subcommittee. We'll go on to number five, which is unfinished business, Student Opportunity Act, SOA, three-year district plan. Mr. D'Agostino, please.
Before we move on, I do have an additional item to bring up under subcommittee. The, the scheduled finance committee for next Tuesday needs to be moved due to a scheduling conflict with BCA to, we were proposing to move it to Wednesday.
Yeah, the city council's on Tuesday night. Monday's the holiday, so council will meet on Tuesday and BCA will cover that and they wouldn't be able to cover us. So I don't have any objections. Any members of the school committee having objections and pushing it one night from Tuesday to Wednesday? Seeing none, we'll, we'll push it one day. It'll be still 6 o'clock, but it will be on Wednesday of next week, subcommittee instead of Tuesday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually.
Joyce?
I'm not sure if this is the right time, but can I request that we have a facility subcommittee? We haven't had one and just so we can get the members, just go over a few things. If we can schedule one?
Absolutely. Yep.
Okay, just as, you know, Chair of the facilities, I'd like to just get together. Do a Zoom. That's the only choice we have, but just so we can see what's going on and see what we need to do to be ready come, come September, if we need to do anything.
Absolutely.
Before schools open, just to get, just to get an update. You guys have been updating us, but I, as Chair, I'd like to set one up for us.
I think, absolutely. And I think we just will coordinate that with BCA and Mike Simmons and his schedule, what works with you. And absolutely, we can set up a Zoom, no problem. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you.
So now, again, we're on Student Opportunity Act, three-year district plan. So this is just a quick update. I sent an email update to you from the Department of Education last Friday. They have now pushed this submission date to now to June 19th. And it also could be moved from June 19th. So it was pushed to May 15th, then it was pushed to June 1st, now it's pushed to June 19th. So again, that has been pushed to the back burner. And we'll wait to see what happens with Student Opportunity Act funds when, when the budget comes out. So that's just a quick update. And then just basically that's it for me. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. We'll go on to number six on the agenda, which is new business. Is there any new business from any school committee members? Mr. D'Agostino, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to share, there was an email that came in regarding a teacher and the principal at the Kennedy School, some outreach they did with a student with some, it was having some medical challenges. And, and obviously I just wanted to share what, what little I could there. But just that, you know, what it meant to that student, her teacher, Mrs. Levine reached out to check in on her and then Mr. Rogan also called and, and checked in as well. And what I, what I wanted to share was, you know, that the parent commented, she was surprised and didn't expect him to call, but of course, we all know how much this man cares for his students. And she went on to say, you know, just what, what we already knew Kennedy was an amazing school and Mr. Rogan reminded her, you know, to remain cougar strong. And so again, I just wanted to share that, that, you know, our, some of our teachers and our principal at the, at the Kennedy School are doing such a wonderful job and, and a student that they had reached out to, it meant the world to that family, so much so that the parent reached out to let the superintendent know about it. And so I just wanted to share that. I thought it would be appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Any other committee members have any new business? And then I just have one that has to go to a motion. The school committee earlier this evening voted on the net school spending, the excess money in net school spending. So I can, let's, one of the members that made the motion in the subcommittee meeting about the, it was about sending the excess transportation money and non-net school spending back to the city. So I believe that needs to be tied up tonight so that can, so Aldo can get moving on that with Troy tomorrow. Someone could entertain a motion on that, please?
Motion to transfer $2 million of non-net school spending back to the city council or to the city.
There's a motion made by Mr. D'Agostino. It was properly seconded by Mr. Rodriguez. We'll take a roll call vote now. The chair Sullivan says yes. Vice Chair D'Agostino?
Yes.
Ms. Zac?
Yes.
Ms. Mendez?
Yes.
Mr. Minicello?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan? Mr. Sullivan? Thank you, Tim. Passes in the affirmative unanimously. Thank you. I just wanted to also give you a status update as mayor. I'm on a call every Monday, Wednesday, Friday and Sunday night. Sunday nights, 8 to 10. It's, it varies between 15 mayors and, and the other night we was 19 mayors. We had the governor the last two Sundays. Last Wednesday, we had Senate President Spilker. Last Friday, we had House Speaker DeLeo. Every Tuesday at 2 o'clock, and this happened again today, I have a standing call with the state delegation, the three reps and the one senator. Mike Thomas and Aldo Petronio join every week. Shirley Azak, Council President, joined today and Troy Clarkson, the CFO. I need everybody to get on the same page and I'll be very blunt. The financial picture is not, not rosy for Brockton. Some mayors are projecting 20% in cut in local aid, which would be chapter 70. And also what we used to call the lottery funds, but they call it Yuga now. If we have a 20% cut, that'd be $40 million. We have a 10% cut, that's $20 million. I mean, that's devastating. So what Mike and Aldo and Troy and I have, have done is, is we've asked and we've actually pled our case and said, we need some guidance from Beacon Hill. And Claire Cronin and Jerry Cassidy, Michelle Dubois and Mike Brady are working to try to get that information. But I had a budget meeting again today for about an hour and a half. I've spoken to some of the unions to give updates on the call I had today. Usually it's a COVID-related information, but I'm just sharing with everybody. And I know Kim Gibson is on the call as well. We need to figure this out, you know. And the speaker was saying probably a 1/12 budget. The Senate President was saying probably not. So we're still not on the same page quite yet, but I don't want to sugarcoat it. It is going to be very, very drastic in the city of Brockton and both Troy and Aldo. The financial experts can concur with that. So I just want to let you know that we're still working every single day. When, when, you know, when people are saying they, they're losing sleep, I'm losing sleep every single night on loss of life and the impact that it's really hurting us here. People hurt, but also financial hurt. And once I have an update from Beacon Hill, I'll share all that information with you. But just rest assured that, we're trying to think of every single tool that we have in the toolbox to be able to try to get through this budget, we will get through this budget. And then the next budget and the following budget can be extremely difficult as well. So just wanted to give you an update from where I stand. I don't know if Aldo or Mike want to opine on anything. No, I just appreciate, Mayor, you putting us on those calls and, you know, again, we, we are, we are pushing them and they're pushing to get us, you know, especially that chapter 70 money, that figure. Obviously, the mayor, you have to think about a lot more just beyond chapter 70, you have the entire city to, to finance. So, but it would be very helpful if they could get us that chapter 70 number sooner than later. So we could see what we're looking at. So that's, and I know that Kim Gibson and the MTA, they're pushing for that as well from their end. So hopefully, again, sooner than later, we're going to get a number from chapter 70 that, where we know where we stand. It's just, it's tough, you know, living without a number. I mean. It is, it is, it is. And I'll tell you, on the calls that I'm on, you know, some people are really expecting the feds to bail us out. And I know the House of Representatives Congress has, has passed something that would really trickle down some substantial money on local aid. But the US Senate, I mean, I don't, I don't have a lot of faith in that. So Mitch McConnell's kind of digging in right there. So I think at the end of the day, listen, we'll, we'll figure out how to do it, but I just wanted to at all times give you the most information that I have. And that's the way I'm going to roll, you know, as long as I'm mayor. I mean, there's no, there's no if, ands or buts. We're all in this together. We're all elected the same way. We all live in Brockton, care about Brockton, pay taxes in Brockton. So that's kind of where we are right now, but we'll continue the dialogue. Is there any other new business? I noticed, oh, Mr. Rodriguez, please.
This is Superintendent. As the man knows, you know, we have a task force on there on the COVID and I'm also part of the data collection committee. Mike, is there anything that we can do far as on the school side to provide some support services to the Board of Health and actually putting in, helping them with the data, putting in a graph or anything that they can, that we can do on the school side?
So there's, we, we, they have, I think mostly the employees over there now are the school nurses. I think there's up to Linder and there's, I think there's eight other school nurses there that are doing input data. And also City Council Jeff, oh my God, I lost with the last name. Thompson, Thompson, Jeff Thompson sent me an email to help with a graph about the curve. So I hooked him up with the department head of Brockton High School of Math, Dan Corbett. So if there's any, anything you need as far as showing numbers, obviously we have plenty of math people that can help show those numbers and graph it out for you. Just send me an email and any assistance we can give you in that area, we'd be happy to, happy to do that. Jess Hodges is happy to display anything on our new electronic board at Brockton High School that you need displayed, you know, just let us know. But I know that, you know, Dan worked, I think it was about two weeks ago, he came up with that graph for Mr. Thompson. So if there's anything like that you need, just reach out and I'll, you know, I'll get somebody to work with you. I'm not a math person, so I wouldn't be much help at all, but I can definitely get you, get you to people that can help with that.
All right, Mike, I appreciate it.
No problem. Just to follow up on that, Tony and Cynthia are on the Health Equity Task Force. And if anybody else wants to go on, I welcome anybody and everybody. I will tell you. I will tell you, I had a conversation with the Attorney General Mara Healy yesterday. Certain mayors, myself, Marty Walsh in Boston, Kim Driscoll up in Salem, Tom McGee up in Len, and I, and I think the other one was Yvonne Spicer in Framingham, we're looking for data, like, you know, age data, gender data, race data. DPH isn't given to us now, and the AG, she thinks that that's wrong, you know, I mean, it is wrong. But that's how DPH is doing right now, so any data that we can have will help Brockton people as we map this out because of the second surge. So, I do want to publicly, again, thank the BEA and, and Mike, because if we just had the one health nurse, Evelyn LeBron, who does yeoman's work, she's awesome, but without the help of Linda Cahill and the other eight public school nurses, we'd be in a lot worse shape. So, thank you again, and thanks to the BEA, and Linda's going to be there through, through the summer. And then again, she'll go back to the school side. So, the Board of Health will be eventually, you know, looking to hire a permanent Executive Health Officer. But right now, again, on Thursday, we have another Health Equity Task Force Group. So, it's all hands on deck and any help we can get, and, and thanks, Tony, for bringing it up. Any other School Committee members have, Joyce?
I just have a couple of questions, so first one is, many of us know that throughout the summer, the school is rented out for different events, things like that. So, how far have we canceled everything? Is everything canceled for the entire summer, you know?
At this time, yes. There's no, we stopped all rentals on March twelfth, told people that everything is canceled until further notice. So, yes, everything has been canceled through the summer, again, unless something drastically changes. But even then, we don't know, we'll wait to see what the guy, we do, I do have a large task force that is working on what reopening schools will look like. So, we will have, you know, updates for you, and I'll have presentations for you as we move into June. So, and again, we need to get our schools ready for, you know, all different kind of things. We're going to have to get some of the shields that have you seen now, if you go into a takeout, we've done that at Central, at the main, main desk. We'll have to do that in other locations, so those are things the facilities will be working on. So, it's very unlikely we'll be renting out any of our facilities this summer.
Okay, because I know.
And you're right, because in mostly those, when you're renting those out, those are gatherings much larger than ten, so.
Because I know the next, I mean, the month of May, the month of June, we're losing out on a lot of dance recitals, you know, a lot of, our, our school is rented out for so many different events. So, I just, that was just one question, so I kind of figured everything was closed, but I just wanted to just make sure that people know and get it clarified that we need to focus on getting our schools ready and getting our students back in the safe manner. And the other question I have is, um, right now, Chart Worlds is providing food for the students. And, you know, that's not going to happen all summer long, and I know, isn't it the mayor's, you know, lunch in the park or something? Have you looked into something to see if they're going to be able to provide more for the students after school lets out?
We're actually getting word, it's too early to totally confirm it. We're getting word that these ten grab-and-go locations will be allowed to operate throughout the whole summer.
That'll be, that'll really help out a lot of families.
Absolutely.
You know, it's a financial burden, a lot of families are going through a tough time right now. So, having that, you know, breakfast and lunch provided is really helping them out. So, to know that there's, that's going to be there in the summer, that, that, that'll take a little bit of pressure off, so that, that's wonderful.
Yeah, we should be able to confirm that, Aldo, already pretty much by next week, we should be able to confirm that for sure, correct?
Yes, correct, we've already been receiving documents on it that they're going to allow us, we have the, we go from the regular school year program into the summer program. So, what they're saying now is a summer program used to be park by park, and the children had to come and eat at the park. So, they've already sent through rules, changes, saying that they're now going to, because of, of social distancing, they won't be able to eat in the park, they'll allow the students to just come to the site and get it. So, the sites we'll apply for are the same sites we're using, since we're not using playgrounds, we're just going to continue. So, Tom Burke has the applications in for all the sites that we currently have, and it looks like they're going to approve everything. I mean, no one's talked, there's no talk about this not happening, so it should continue.
No, that's good news. You know, given a tough time, it's, again, it's good news to hear that they will keep providing lunches and breakfast for, for the families that do need it, so, no, thank you. Actually, thank you all for everything that you're doing, we've, we've gone through a tough time the past couple of months. And, I mean, we can't express anymore how proud we are from watching you, you guys pull this together to watching our schools, you know, the faculty, the teachers. I, I, I love watching them interacting online, reading stories, Mayor's got his story time, we have principals that are reading, telling jokes. We have PTOs, PTA's, kids getting on Zoom. I think everyone's making the best of what happened, you know, with the whole COVID nineteen, they're trying to just get through and, and, just get through it like the rest of us, but definitely, definitely Brockton proud, definitely proud of, of how everyone pulled together. So, and we're going to keep doing it, we're, we're going to pull together and get through the opening of schools, hopefully in the fall. So, thank you all, even my fellow School Committee members, you've all, you've all done great, thank you.
I, I also just want to thank the United Way, so for many weeks, I've been negotiating the Brockton Together Fund. They actually, I came up with the name and they liked it, and so we're rolling with it. I think the Enterprise ran a pretty good article recently, but the Brockton Together Fund is in conjunction with United Way here, Plymouth County, and also Mass Bay. Ten grand was already donated from National Grid, and twenty grand was donated as seed money right from the United Way. So, we're raising money, and it's really going to help Brocktonians. The money is going to be paid out, distributed to, you know, nonprofits, social service agencies that then will give it to the Brockton residents. So, just wanted to, again, give a shout out to the United Way, they've had a proven track record in Somerville and in Chelsea. And, and they contacted me, and again, it took some time to negotiate, but it's, it's going to be a game changer, it really is, so thank you. Is there any other new business? So, on the agenda, it says executive session, we don't have any planned executive session tonight, which was number seven on the agenda. So, number eight, which when I was on the City Council was always my favorite agenda item, it's adjournment, adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
This is Sullivan, thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Ah, Ms. Mendez, thank you, this is good, usually it's quick, 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 I like it. We're going to take a roll call, it was properly, it was motion made, properly seconded, the Chair Sullivan says yes, Vice Chair D'Agostino?
Yes.
Ms. Azak?
Yes.
Ms. Mendez?
Yes.
Mr. Minichello?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Unanimous adjournment, I want to thank everybody tonight, I want to thank Superintendent again, Melinda Campbell, Kim Gibson for the BEA, and, and all of you on the School Committee, a good meeting tonight, stay safe and we'll be in touch soon, have a good night, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.